Good afternoon, everybody. It's Monday, June 27th, and this is Moscow's meeting of the Public Works and Finance Committee. My right, Councilman Walter Steed; my left, Councilwoman Catherine Bonzo. Over beyond her is Gary Redner, City Supervisor. And the first order of business today is the approval of the Public Works and Finance Committee meeting minutes from June 13th.
I would move approval.
I agree.
And so do I. They are approved. Next up is the construction agreement for the East City Park overlay, 2016, with the other member of the group at the table, David Schott.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Like you mentioned, this is a consideration of construction agreement for the East City Park overlay. I'd like to take you through this presentation. The presentation will cover the construction agreement and the budget, project scope, and our staff recommendation. The construction agreement is between the city of Laramie, or Moscow, excuse me.
That's us, right?
New guy card here, and Motley Monty Incorporated. This project was approved in fiscal year 16, and I'd like to make a note within your packet, I do have it listed in fiscal year 17. My apologies. It's fiscal year 16. The budget for the project was $26,000. The construction agreement is the amount of $24,696. The main focus of the agreement will be installing 506 square yards of asphalt, remove and replace 1,200 square feet of existing pathway, install 142 tons of base, we'll raise 110 linear feet of the pathway to mitigate root upthrust, excuse me, install 30 linear feet of new pathway to the two- to five-year-old playground to make that ADA accessible, raise about 56 linear feet of pathway near the restroom. We've got some ponding issues in there. And remove and replace 16 linear feet of pathway for the concrete bench pads, each one of them being eight feet. We can't just do an overlay. We'll have a nasty lip there. To keep those benches ADA accessible, we want to not have a lip, so we'll remove and replace with asphalt. This is a site map of the project area. The project area will go from the basketball courts, this is East City Park, to about the restroom, right before the Y here, up to the two-to-five-year-old playground here, and a large portion of the remove and replace will be in this area here. Root upthrust here, and here with the two bench locations here. And all the areas in red here and here will receive a new asphalt overlay. Just some examples of what we want to mitigate with this agreement. The root upthrust here, the idea is to lift the pathway up a little bit with base and asphalt to get above that root upthrust. A little bit hard to see in the picture, but this pathway just kind of stops, and so we've got to make up this gap to the two-to-five-year-old playground to make it accessible. Again, a little bit hard to see. It was very shady in that nice day when I took some pictures in the park. It was a nice setting. We've had a residual ponding issue here at the pathway, so the idea is to lift this up about estimated up to a foot and a half to raise it, and then we'll mitigate some water through here and put a pipe. Again, with the bench, we can't just do a two-inch overlay here. We'll have to cut it out here and here to make that a smooth transition into the concrete for the benches. Our recommendation is to approve the construction agreement between the city of Moscow and Motley Monty for the 2016 East City Park overlay project in the amount of $24,696. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I know that this would be a pretty common question. It has to do with the trees that have made it buckle. So how do you address making sure that the trees are not impacted?
Very good question. The idea is to take off the existing asphalt and base, and we'll lift that up a little bit. Those trees are fairly, they're older trees. I don't think the root development's going to be exponential like you'd see with a younger tree, and the idea is to bring the asphalt and the base up about four inches, four to five inches, to allow for new asphalt that won't have that thrusting. Working with the city of Moscow Engineering Department, and it sounds like they do that quite a bit around town, so to mitigate the roots.
Okay, thank you.
So you're not going to cut new roots? You'll just, you'll bridge over them with new base and asphalt?
Councilor Steed, yes. I can't guarantee we won't cut any roots, but we won't cut any large roots, so.
And then one other question. Do you happen to know how many total linear feet we're talking about here, just out of curiosity?
Afraid I don't, Councilor Steed. I've got, what do we have here? 506 square yards of asphalt, so the linear footage would be, boy, I'd be guessing. I don't have a linear foot for new asphalt, but it would be the areas within red from the basketball court to the restroom, and then that Y up on the northwest corner.
If you don't mind, if you could email me that, just, I'm in favor of the project. I don't have any problem with it.
Sure.
It's a very good presentation, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate it. I was walking through at night. It makes a big difference at night.
Could you rattle back to the first slide with the... Yep, that one. Yeah, so that kind of led into, yours led into my same question, because 506 square yards, and then we're replacing 1,272 square feet, and I was worried, is that a one-to-one?
My apologies. I don't have apples to apples. I just went off our bid sheets for the 506 square yards. But I'll convert that to linear feet.
So we aren't losing any paths, and the paths that are there are being upgraded?
And you're getting more?
Yeah.
Primary focus is repair and the overlay, so we're not taking, but it's all existing pathways, interior pathways, not taking any out.
Okay, cool. So it sounds like we're in favor of proceeding, and off to consent agenda it goes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Next up is the downtown public restroom project rebid request, Dwight Curtis.
I'm back. Okay.
It's good, it's good you're back. I'm glad you're back.
Yeah, it's good stuff. Okay, if you'll recall, we went through the process of having a restroom designed for the downtown Friendship Square area, and back in 2015's, basically, when we went through the whole process of deciding what and where, and then we ended up with Design West Architects, who designed the project, and that was back in last December of '15. City Council approved that design, went out to bid. As you'll recall, bids were really high compared to what the estimate was, and the low bid was $191,600. Consequently, the council rejected all the bids, and we're bringing this forward again to see where you would like us to go with this. Rebid it, or go with the modular designs, or not at all. And then, of course, after today, depending on what your decision is, it would take this to council. And so where do we go from here? And we talked about option one, rebidding the original design, and we did talk to some, a couple of the bidders to see, you know, just to find out why things were so high compared to what we had anticipated, and one of the conclusions that we got back was that a fall design would be less expensive, that the contractors were looking for projects to wrap up their year. And also, we came up with some interior and just basically facility design things that are minor, but could make a lot of difference. One of the culprits, as we called it, was the brick exterior, and just what we were trying to do was just expensive, and so the, one of the bidders said, you know, if we had gone to, given them some latitude on the type of brick, that that would have made a lot of difference in the price. I don't know what that amount is, but he thought so.
What does latitude mean?
In other words, this here is, I wrote it in your packets, it's kind of a smooth-faced. This is what you see on a lot of the standard buildings out here. I think Walgreens, places like that have it. It's smooth-faced, it's really common, and it's easy to work with, where the smaller brick is a lot harder to work with, is what he said. Takes a lot more time, and it's harder to get. We wanted aged brick, things like that. So what we were proposing in this, if we rebid it, is to have this as a, that flexibility as the...
Add alternate.
Yeah, or I think it was actually the opposite. We were going to have the brick, the fancier brick as the add alternate, and that way we're not bidding the same thing that we had before. And just some smaller things, plumbing, use different types of materials for the plumbing, some flex or PEX, I think is what you call it. It's basically hose, bendable hose, instead of your copper and things like that. Using FRP, and I did put some pictures down here, in case you just don't know what that is. FRP, they're four-by-eight sheets of this material. It's easy to wash and easy to care for, but it is cheaper, it doesn't look quite as nice. That's PEX right there. It's just, instead of a copper tubing. And also possibly using a, let's see what do you call it, a thickened edge slab instead of a standard foundation, and so we thought that might save a little bit of money, too. And so with those, that's where we're at. And then secondly, second option, yes, sir?
So are you including the, all five of those options up there is add alternates, one way or the other, in the bids?
Yes, yes.
Can thickened edge slabs work with the modulators?
Whole different animal. It comes with its own foundation.
Okay.
That's what's kind of cool about it. That's already built into the facility. So any more questions on that part?
Nope.
No, that was good for clarification, because when I read it, I didn't know. Thank you.
You bet. And of course, on the modular facility, that's, we had talked about that before. We have firmer numbers now, and then also, whether, option three, whether you want to pursue it at this time or not. I mean, maybe you don't. And then maybe you had some other ideas that I didn't have on here. So I put a cost breakdown here, so you could see, comparing side to side. We are using, in here, you can see that $191,600. Now, that's the bid from last, the last go-around. We're hoping it won't be that high this time. That was really the whole point. But you had to start with something, and to give you some comparisons, and you wanted the real costs. The, for example, the water sewer, that's in-house work, but Public Works estimates that to be about $3,100 worth. Bidding services, $1,500, and cost, or construction administration, this is the same number that we had last time, but I do not, we did not offer that as, to get that quote yet, so needed, there was no sense going through there until you decide which way you want to go. But I would imagine it will be fairly close to the same amount.
Why would it be any different?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then 10% contingency, that's a little bit high, but for some reason, this facility just makes me nervous with prices and everything, so if we don't use it, we don't use it, that's great, but if we hit a snag, this is the downtown Friendship Square area, I mean, you just don't know what you're going to hit in some of that infrastructure, so, or at least, we might not know. So anyway, that's, that's the 225, 225 is what I came up with for that price. This does not include the 1% arts. That will fluctuate based on whatever we end up with a final tally. The CXT Montrose, that's this rascal down here on the bottom left, that's a split-face type block, but what we had been talking about was a brick stamp, and also, there was some interest in a couple of single-use facilities instead of a multi-use, and so I threw that in as well, so you could see what the price is. The Montrose, the facility itself is $143,000. This $30,000, that's what I woke up in the middle of last night and remembered that I didn't include. And this sort of goes back to what Catherine was just talking about with the foundation. When I, originally, what I sent out in the pack, it was $5,000 for that, and that was what I was figuring for, packing the gravel and everything, the bed that this facility would sit on, and I just didn't take it the next step, because we have all the sidewalks and all that that has to be redone, and there's the removal of a tree, just stuff like that, so.
And those are included in the $191,600 bid?
Yes, yes.
For the first time, okay.
Yes. And so same thing with the contingency, so you can see, about $194,000, it's still a spendy bugger. And the Cortez, granted, a lot smaller facility, it'll handle fewer people at one time, but it is simple, and you could see the difference in the price. And for that facility, you know, $98,000, still a lot of money. So, but I wanted you to see those, to give you an idea of how to compare. Let me go on through here. Funding sources, we started out in this year's budget with $170,000. We used $1,250 for the previous bid, left us the $168,750. This rebid, if you rebid, would be $1,500 more dollars, would leave us $167,250. I do have a little, I think, seven grand, I think, left in my planning money if we needed to go that route, but remaining, we had $167,250 in the budget for this project. And we've, the Moscow URA and a private donor together have offered up to $30,000 toward the Design West design to offset those costs.
Dwight?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on, is any, any cost with the architect for the redesign of the rebid? The rebid, I presume, is the $1,500. Is there any cost for talking about changing the piping, talking about changing the brick, talking about changing the foundation?
Well, you can see, the previous one was $1,250. The extra to the $1,500 takes care of that, yes. And it's, this is, these aren't really great. It was really difficult to get these so I could, you could see them real well, but I wanted you to see, just from an aerial view, what these look like. This is the Design West aerial of the facility. You can see a male/female, you've got two toilets and a sink. The male, you've got a urinal and a toilet. And the privacy wings. Go over to the Montrose, you have the privacy wings and two bathrooms, they're flip-flopped on this, but, and a toilet and a urinal. And the Design West with the wings is about 533 square feet. The Montrose is 546 square feet, so they're very similar, very similar. The Cortez model that we looked at, the smaller one, is about 176 square feet, so you can see the difference.
With no privacy wings?
With privacy, well, the Cortez has no privacy wings, correct. But the reason for that is because one person's in there, they lock the door, where the other ones, you'd have more than one person in there, and so a little more exposure. A side view of the two facilities, it's hard to tell, but that's supposed to be brick right there. But this is the Design West with the shed roof, that's the privacy wing there, and this is the Montrose, and you can see their privacy wings a little bit different. They overhang and have a little pillar there, but it's, what that is, it's, they have a stamp and, or a mold, and they pour their concrete on it, and when they lift it, it has the shape of brick. And we, and I have photos in here for you, but we, as staff, we went up and visited the plant, and it was, it was actually pretty amazing what they can do. They had a lot of different designs, and I'll show you the different things they can do with this brick when we get to the photos, so it'll make sense, and it's in color.
Yeah, go right in.
And speaking of, this is, believe it or not, that is brick stamped. That is one piece of concrete from the ground up, and you can see the rock, that's concrete. And what they do, the way they explained it, if I got this right, they paint it all one certain color, let it dry, and then they go through and they dip it again, and only the top part where the brick is actually gets the red. So and that's how you end up with that wash, that, the mortar look. And this is, I believe, it wasn't listed, but the best I could tell, this is a Montrose without the wings. And, let me see, get my button here. And this here is a Cortez, but you can also see where they didn't want that mortar look, so they just dipped the whole thing in the color. And so you just end up with one color brick. So just wanted that, you know, it really wasn't as clear as we needed it to be last time we talked about this, but I wanted you to see what it is you would get if you went that direction. Just for fun, you can see this, how this stuff works. You can see upper right, or they've got a piece of one of the restrooms on a Lowboy, hauling it somewhere. You can see how they, depending on the size of the facility, this is one facility, and they bolt the two together, so they're just one. This is, I believe, was a Montrose, but they had the access up front, and, or plumbing alley, and as you can see, it doesn't go very far before you get to the back part. And so it's, it was really fascinating stuff. If for nothing else, and you're ever up there, they love to take you on a tour, and it's pretty interesting, and they ship all over the world. So now that I've given them their advertising. Funding sources, we covered this already, but it, going toward the end here, where you're trying to make decisions, wanted to show you again of what we've got in the budget, and that this $30,000 donation was very specific to the Design West design. So back to what we need for direction is, do we want to rebid with those modifications? The modular facility, and which modular facility, and decline or something else?
Walter's first. Both of your plan views show water fountains.
Yes.
Are those part of the project?
Yes.
In all cases?
Yes.
Okay.
Mine had to do with outside electrical. I was wondering if on the Design West, is there any place to plug in? Is that going to be any part of the infrastructure downtown that people can...
We will have outlets.
On the building?
On the outside end.
But not on the modulators?
Yes.
You can ask for them?
Yes.
Okay. And then the lighting, is there a difference between the, because the three commissions, okay, the Design West, and I wondered if it had something to do, too, with the way the lighting looked downtown, different than the way the modulators would look? Do you know anything about the lighting on the buildings?
As in, will there be lighting?
No, I know there's going to be lighting. I wondered if there was a particular design, part of the Design West?
This is pretty much what you're going to get on either facility.
On that one, anyway? That wasn't anything, there was no change on that?
No.
And it's only going to light up the front, not the back?
Well, we'll have light on the back, the back, because it's, well, it's just the way it is, and, but there are the, also, the parking lot lights as well. So they definitely needed it in the front, because that's where people go in, and then the back, just for security.
And then all the lights are going to be on motion?
Well, no, the outside lights would be on...
No, inside, sorry.
At night, the daytime would be on motion, yes.
Okay.
And also, the, we had electronic locks for these, timed locks.
Oh, okay.
And so it would be for the Design West facility as well as the modulators.
What'd you learn about the durability of the color on the prefab brick stamp walls?
We talked to the people in Ellensburg, and that facility's been there for years, and they've, unless somebody goes by and chips it, you know, actually runs into it or something, they have not seen anywhere. It's a stain type of a wash, and so it goes into the actual brick. So they don't do a lot of the brick stamped. Actually, had a hard time getting in the photos, because Ellensburg was the closest one that they had. It's just not a popular thing that they do. These do have the shed roofs on the modulators, which, because that's what we were doing with Design West. I don't know what the price break is, but that is an option that was added, so there is a price break if you went with the standard gable-type roof.
So what we have bid is a one-directional shed roof as opposed to what we see here, which is...
Yes. They just didn't have any photos of anything with a shed roof. We had the drawings, but just not photos, so. They sent the one from Ellensburg, I guess had a shed roof on it, but it was, had a, I don't know what you call it, but kind of a straight roof up above it, like a false wall, so the picture, you couldn't see the roof, but they said it was a shed roof.
Okay. So we aren't quite comparing apples to apples yet, because the Design West would require a rebid to see what fall construction could do with and without the adjustments that may potentially occur within there. So I don't know, from my point of view, I think that a rebid on that, so we can actually get reasonable comparisons, especially in light of the willingness of the URA and private donor to contribute money to the Design West, could provide us a savings overall, and I think that we should have a look at that, so we're at least talking the same language throughout. Councilman John Weber has a question slash comment.
Well, we keep hearing about this $20,000 and this $10,000. Is that only for Design West? Oh, okay.
Yes.
So if you pay enough, they just kind of, okay, it's not, not across the board. No, no, we're not playing on a level playing field here. We, okay, good enough.
Okay. Gary?
And should the council ultimately decide to go with the modular, we will have to follow public bid processes for that as well, so you wouldn't just go up and order it and have them deliver it.
But that shouldn't, other than the time, effort, and expense of doing it, create any problems?
Problems meaning?
Making it impossible to obtain what Dwight has forecast.
No, I think that's probably pretty reasonable, but all I'm saying is, is that we would have to follow a public process.
Understood.
Yeah, so I think, given the nature of the beast, I think forwarding it up as a regular item to council would be a good thing to do, perhaps with a recommendation of, let's rebid and see what comes back with the modifications to design, as well as the fall project aspect of Design West.
I was just going to ask, are you taking any comments?
No, I could. Does anybody have any further comments out there?
I have some.
Well, that's what you're here for.
But I didn't know.
That's why you're up here, yeah.
So I talked to two business owners, and I put calls into the Co-op in New St. Andrews and One World, to ask those business owners, book people, I think this is the one, Carol Spurling. A couple weeks ago, I had talked to one of the business owners about the restrooms, and just said it would be really helpful if we could have more information on how it impacted the, the business owners downtown, because I felt like that piece was kind of lacking in everything that we had to make decisions from. And so this afternoon, I talked to Loretta Campbell, and she said it was okay to say her name. She is the owner of HyperSpud, and she wanted me to say that. She supports, she's very much in support of the restrooms. She has some stories about what is some of the issue, and the problem has to do with the volume of people that come in her building because of her location right by Friendship Square, especially during Farmer's Market. And then where her bathroom is located, it's not a safe bathroom in terms of getting back because their stock is back there, and... She is the owner of HyperSpud and she wanted me to say that. She supports, she's very much in support of the restrooms. She has some stories about, um, what is some of the issue. And the problem has to do with the volume of people that come in her building because of her location right by Friendship Square, especially during Farmer's Market. And then where her bathroom is located, it's not a safe bathroom in terms of getting back because their stock is back there and, um, their inventory. And so that's a, a worry on their part. And, um, just because of the variety of people coming through, sometimes they've had some messes that they didn't expect because people couldn't find the restroom. And she said on an everyday basis, um, there's usually about four people that ask to use the restroom that aren't necessarily shopping. But during the market, um, she said, if I had one that allowed people, um, there'd at least be thirty, thirty asks every time because of, um, the accessibility. And again, she said that she was, um, in support and, and I just wanted to make sure that we considered handicapped and little kids, like with heavy doors, you know, being able to get in. And then the other business owner I talked to is Louise Todd and she owns Mikey's. And she said that, um, at 10 o'clock when they open the doors, there's always at least 10 people waiting to go to the restroom, um, on the Farmer's Market day. And that the pawn shop, um, next door has opened their doors later. And that's could be one of the reasons that they've, they, they don't open the doors to let people in Mikey's because she says they also have had to do a lot more cleaning. But on a Farmer's Market day, they have between 30 and 50, uh, people use the restroom that aren't purchasing from any of the businesses in the area. And that, um, last week or so, she was told by a vendor, um, that, and he was told, um, that this is where vendors go. And she said, I didn't know that. And so she said, she just wanted to make it clear that it, it does impact them and is in favor of a restroom.
I believe, um, the last time this was presented, we, we had contacted New St. Andrews College who, uh, opens up their restrooms to the public on Farmer's Market days and interviewed, um, their business manager. And, um, I believe Gina was there as well, uh, at that time. And they indicated that it was a huge issue for them. They were happy to do it. We invited them, the direction of the council and the mayor to, uh, talk to us about what the cost was and that we may be willing to help offset some of that cost. As of yet, we've not been recontacted, but they indicated that, uh, that it does have quite an impact for them in increased costs.
First you, then you, then back to Walter. Brandy Sullivan.
Well, I was, uh, glad to hear that number three wasn't being discussed. That's why I didn't perk up there, which was do nothing and just table it. So, um, but since we're talking about the business owners as one of the owners of One World Cafe, we open early, we open at seven and we have vendors there at seven. We, I, we have bathroom regulars basically that are not customers, um, vendors. And I would estimate at least 100 people on Farmer's Market use our bathroom and they don't ask. It's not like in HyperSpud where you ask to use the restroom. I mean, it's kind of like, you know, sneaking in. We go through so much product, toilet paper. In the past month, we've had to replace our toilet handle three times. Normally we don't have to the rest of the year, ever. We have stuff taken out of the bathroom, you know? We also, night is an issue because we're open later at night. So you have people sort of, you know, wandering in at night in the bathroom for a long time. We have, you know, a couple younger women working. Sometimes it's a little bit sketchy, it's uncomfortable, you know, we're not quite sure what's going on. I think there's, for some of the, you know, maybe, uh, transient population, there is not a public restroom and they need a bathroom and we provide that bathroom and they need water. We have self-serve water and cups. Our cups disappear and we're not going to turn people away that need a bathroom or water. But it's, um, it definitely adds up in cost and, um, inconvenience, mass, everything else. So I think for both Farmer's Market, but just also being an early morning business and a late business where many of the others are closed, I think we get hit a lot. And I think the co-op gets hit a lot also. Thank you.
What, no question?
Yes.
So what would you do different if there were a public restroom in Friendship Square or behind it?
I would, we would put signs on the door that says restrooms for customers only, please. There are public restrooms two blocks down and show where, where our staff would be also if it's an issue, you know, would be able to say to someone. Because now, I would love to say that now, but there isn't one. We can't direct them to go anywhere else. So we, yeah.
So do you, would you guess there would be a proliferation of restrooms for customers only signs on the businesses downtown if there were a public restroom?
Uh, I would guess there may be. I mean, if there's a public restroom, I don't know why you wouldn't, uh, alert people to that rather than having them coming in your business. I mean, there's, you know, the water bills and everything else. It, it, it's supporting, you know?
I just, I haven't had any, well, I can remember one person that questioned the need for a public restroom downtown. Everybody else is in favor.
Right.
I mean, even those that have, like myself, that have problems with the price, we want a public restroom downtown. So we're, we're, we've got, I think we've got that point. We get that. We're just trying to figure out how to do it.
And I, so then I think since it does seem thankfully that everybody is beyond that point in, in agreement and that's not really the question now, but just my little glance at the numbers with that big 10%.
Contingency.
Contingency also, that's $20,000 right there that hopefully wouldn't have to be spent. And then when you look at that, the, the difference between the two perhaps is really not very much, especially with the donation added to the other. So I, I would support a rebid too. And, and considering all those things, when you're comparing those prices, maybe it's not as much of a savings as it appears at first glance, unless you really go with the much smaller one that, so, yeah.
Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I've been the facilities manager. All the way up, because we need to have you on the microphone.
That's fine. Hello, hello, hello.
So.
Hi, I'm Jacob Moya. I've been the facilities manager at New St. Andrews College for the past year.
Oh, hi. I left you a message.
I took Eric Burnett's position, who's now a realtor in the area. Um, our, uh, impact, um, is, is pretty heavy. I think that in the time I've been here, there's been a, just increase in the total number of vendors, um, downtown, which is great to see, uh, the success of the Farmer's Market. Um, I think that what I would like to see is the, uh, change of, um, of, I, I would like to see what the impact of having the restrooms downtown would actually be, um, after they're installed, whenever they are installed. Um, because I, I still think that there, um, is still going to be a need for, uh, businesses downtown to offer restrooms and hopefully it's to paying customers. Um, because at, at that point, we, we still might be willing to open up our restrooms if there's still a need. We, we are a private college, but we want to serve the community. And so it would be nice if we didn't have to, uh, place a student, uh, in the commons to just kinda answer questions or watch over things, um, and, and just have the, the door closed. But we also want to be available if this is not the only answer, right? Because it, it, I don't know if you have numbers, but I, I don't know the total usage of restrooms in general downtown. I think it'd be hard to find those numbers. And I don't know if this is a panacea. I don't, don't know if this is going to solve all those issues. And so I wanted to, to speak for the college and just say, you know, um, we are still considering , uh, helping out if the market continues to grow. And this is like only a temporary solution because four restrooms, it looks like may not be, may not meet the need.
Yep. Well, we sure, sure do appreciate the civic participation in New St. Andrews. Really do. We appreciate it a lot.
And one of the things I've seen is a lot of children, even throughout the week, we get people coming in because it's kind of an open campus and, and we get children coming in with the parents, so, cause they're at the playground there. And just noticing how many children are downtown and, and, um, it just seems like there's more and more children all the time. And so, um, and those, those people grow up and they stay in Moscow and have more children. So.
Yeah, I have, I have to echo what Art just said. You know, as a, as a single council person, and I think I can safely speak for the, for the city council administration, how much we appreciate what New St. Andrews has done for ten, 12 years or whatever, making it available. I didn't realize that y'all staffed it, that you have a, a student that's, I, I, I'm guessing, if you're going to study on Saturday, would you do it down there so you can watch the bathrooms for us or whatever you're doing? But, but we, we do appreciate, we recognize it and we, we really appreciate the fact that you don't have to do it. You can lock that door or private use only or whatever. And it's really made, I hope it's taken a little bit of the burden off of One World and, uh, the, and HyperSpud and the other places, um, in terms of, you know, y'all being willing to do what you are. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pass that up the chain to the.
I, I will do that.
To the other folks.
I was just going to say the one, um, business or entity downtown that I didn't get a chance to call this morning would be called the Pritchard Gallery because again, people know where restrooms are located that are accessible. And that one, um, is one of those you can get to just by bypassing the door person.
Victoria Silver, 121, North Lily, Moscow. So, uh, you have enough here to justify a rebid, so I just want to encourage that. You can always compare it to a modular later, which I probably don't favor, but you know, you have enough for, to look at a rebid. And under no circumstances go to just the two instead of the four.
Right.
Cause as you've already heard, that's going to be pretty minimal anyway. And the other thing is, is you can get it, if you have kids and stuff and you're washing some kid, you're washing the kid's face off, somebody else could still be in the bathroom, using the bathroom. But with the single ones, it's locked, nobody else can come in. So, anyway, just want to thank you for continuing and going forward and encourage the rebid.
Thanks, Victoria. Okay, so kind of established the need for the facilities. Now it's going forward with the details. So, um, you guys okay with putting it on regular agenda and, uh, looking at the options here? Rebids or, well, I guess we'd have to do bids slash rebids.
It's just a rebid.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what I think Dwight's essentially saying is it's going to cost $1,500 to get the bid documents together, send it back out and see if we can take advantage of the add alternates, the alternates and the, uh, the bid climate. If a fall bid is better, it's the best we can hope for at this point.
I think so.
Run it.
Yep. Regular agenda to provide further opportunity for public testimony if people want. Thanks Dwight.
Thank you, Dwight.
Okay, next up is a request for support for Sojourners Alliance. Gary.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, as you have seen in the newspaper and the council has been addressed by Steve Bonner. Invite Steve to the table if I could. Uh, Steve is the executive director of Sojourners Alliance and, uh, he explained to the council the issues with the, uh, federal funding, uh, problems that, uh, they've come up against. And I think Steve has convened some people to talk about, um, how sojourners can continue to do what they're doing. So, um, we've invited him back here for an opportunity to address the committee.
Thank you for having me. I am here for money this time, Walter. Um, so after presenting to you the last time, uh, still gathering my, my tack plan, so to speak. And so, uh, having met with the county commissioners, with Mayor Lambert, but also met with Bruce Pittman to reach out to the faith-based community and to have those faith-based communities reach out to the greater, uh, area of our, uh, region. And I'm in, uh, discussions or trying to discuss possibility of working with Department of Corrections, kind of reevaluating that, you know, how would we look if we do reopen? So again, what we're doing is on August 31st, everybody that's onsite will be exited the program. Uh, so I'll have no housing for the homeless onsite.
Effective what date?
August 31st.
Okay.
And then we're planning on taking two months of what we're calling hibernation, uh, where I'm going to need to heal up and as my office manager, because we're running real short staff. Uh, we'll come in and do the bills, et cetera. Um, and then from that point, be able to project from all the donations we've received, how long we can trail out, making our basic bills before we would have to look at actual full closure. And from working backwards where I have four tenants onsite, I'd have to give them three months' notice. Uh, my off-site program, um, that's dwindling down as I'm not taking anyone and people are leaving. Uh, I'll have about four people in that program that I will need to give them about three months' notice. So our hopes are, the goal is to identify enough solid funds that we can then go back into full operations, providing housing for the homeless. But with a little caveat, we're, uh, it's looking like more funds are going to be coming from our county and so shifting how we accept people. In the past, as I've mentioned, that, uh, about one quarter, maybe one third of people that come to us are from other areas. And if, uh, looking at what funding sources we have, I might need to change that by, let's say, designating one bed for Clearwater County, one bed for, a respite bed for St. Joe's and kind of looking in a different way of how to support the beds as opposed to an overall operation. Um, and with those negotiations and with now almost two months into this and as the referrals have stopped, what kind of impact is, is starting to have on agencies and programs that refer to us and reaching out to them where I planted the seed in the very beginning, asking them all to write a letter of support, how they perceive the impacts would be. Well, I'm starting to get some feedback already on that because I was trying to stimulate for them to look at, well, now things are happening. Um, as the numbers that I presented, you know, we're averaging 12,500 people bed nights per year. And that's over a period of six years on the average. So, uh, our success rates, um, is 60%, which is well above the norm for the United States because we have actively revamped our program. So it's a very successful program. And certainly we can't meet all the needs of everybody, but when we do get folks that aren't, uh, really fitting into what we are, like somebody that's development disabled, we'll house them until we get them into the right place. I won't put them back out on the streets. So I believe we're providing a good resource. Uh, when it comes to funding, what I'm hoping for is that the city council would step up once to support us, that would give us the breathing time where if I have a year's time of committed funds, that it gives me more time where I can actually hire somebody for a year if they know it's a year. And, and then work on more solid funding from that, uh, and also support the numbers. We have had, uh, I've had a number of conversations with Senator Crepo's office. Uh, he has four staff members on this, exploring it, uh, because rural areas are much different than the urban areas. And with our loss, there really won't be any housing for the homeless in our region. There'll be one small program in Lewiston, the two family promise, but there won't be any long-term housing whatsoever. So I've also requested with, uh, Idaho Housing that through their foundation, would they be willing to step up, uh, 10,000 a year for the next two years? So I'm reaching out to everybody that has supported us to see if I can get some commitments and obligations. If, if the city council and the city approves this, the only time I would ask for it is if I have committed funds that would be to reopen. I wouldn't look at those funds to just trail out longer to see if I can get those funds. So.
So how much are you looking at?
125,000.
No, that's okay. That, I guess, so the last time when you talked to us at the council meeting, you had said that, um, you were going to find out if it was going to be necessary or not. So in the research that you've done so far in all these meetings, you found out that, um, there is an interest and people want it revamped and reworked.
Yes.
So by coming to us, what you're asking for is a commitment to the revamping process?
To reopening. Correct. I'm not really revamping my program in such that I'm still going to provide housing for the homeless if I have the funds. Um, uh, I've got lost track of my thought there. Um, so could you reword your question?
Yeah, you, so the, the amount you're asking for is for this year period?
Right.
In aggregate?
Aggregate, I'm sorry.
125,000 total.
Total.
I, I was only kidding about asking the city for that much.
So, but we need to know is how much are you asking the city for?
Um, well, I'm asking for 10,000. I mean, if the city has more, I don't want to be greedy. I realize we need lots, but, um, I'm not asking the city to, to foot the larger part of the bill. Um, so, I mean, I, that's the take I have on it.
So basically, as you've been talking to the different entities, you're finding out what they can contribute. So you, you're asking the city council for 10,000 because that seems to be what's necessary based on everybody else who's contributing?
It's reasonable. I haven't had firm commitments. I estimate that if through probation parole, if I have, uh, beds, that, that might generate about 60,000 right there. So, um, and again, what I'm looking at is that a broad base, you know, if I get locked into one funding source or two, if one of those goes by the wayside, then I fall back to a lack of funding. And that's where this to me is an opportunity to spread it out so no one program or agency is taking it all on. so no one program or agency is taking it all on and supporting us.
So, who do you actually have solid commitments from?
No one.
No one?
No. The, the county commissioners are upping that to twenty-five hundred from previous year. Uh, I do, I did read that they have, uh, contingency funds that they're requesting more funds, recognizing that without our services, that social services would, uh, would get hit harder. And then with Commissioner, um, Walter indicating that through our discussions with him as well, that, that might be funds that we could come back to and ask for more from the county. Uh, but again, I haven't anything solid right now at all.
And you need a, a decision by August 31st?
Well, no, that's where that, eh, would, so, I, I've brought in about sixty-five thousand dollars in donations, a number of ways. So, once I hit about the beginning of August, I can project forward how much that money I have will last in paying the bills, et cetera, then work backwards from that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, during that time where I'll be laid off, I will still be working on the side, trying to identify funding sources, going out to meetings and presentations, et cetera. So, there will come a point where it will be irreversible, which I don't know when. That will be, it'll be sometime this year, I'm sure.
So, Gary, within, uh, the legislative reserve, would we have enough floating around to fund ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, you, the amount budgeted in FY16 was twenty-five thousand dollars. None has been committed as of this time. So, you have the capacity if you wish, desire to do that.
What do we have in low-income housing? In the past, we budgeted.
We did not budget any in there this year.
It was zero budgeted this year?
Yes.
Okay.
We have fair and affordable housing, uh, for the Fair Affordable Housing Commission, but no additional funding was put into low-income housing.
How mu- how much is in there?
For affordable housing. Oh, it's, it's minimal. It's like, I want to say it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, just for clarification for me and trying to understand this, when you were kidding around with a hundred and twenty-five thousand, why did you throw that number out?
Because that's how much we need to operate. Um, so I lost-
Here?
Uh, that we've lost. Well, we lost a hundred thousand. We've been running in deficit for five, six, seven years. And that twenty-five thousand, on top of that hundred thousand, would meet our needs to be healthy and viable, et cetera. So, I won't have to lay people off or absorb positions or have the cuts, et cetera. So, which I've been doing for about the last five years. And, and I can't keep doing that.
So, you're looking for a commitment?
Yes. Yes. Not today. As I'm putting my feelers out, you know, a little story for years ago, I approached the state superintendent of Nevada about doing school programs. And he introduced me to all the superintendents of the whole state. Uh, and in watching this, one superintendent of rural areas said, "We will do this." So, then I went and presented to all the principals, and one principal did it and all the rest watched. And in that way, it's kind of the same thing that it seems to be happening, is people are waiting to see who will step up and commit. And then from that, it just builds on itself. That's my hopes, anyway, so.
So, relative to commitment, uh, it behooves the council to get things up and committed while we're still in the same fiscal year. So, um, maybe move this on up to city council as a regular agenda item and have a discussion there. And then have you come back and say, "At what time would you like to see this commitment firmed up?" And especially relative to the budget year that we've got working here before other items percolate up to the top.
And I think with the amount that you really need to request.
I'm sorry, what?
And with the amount that you're really wanting to request, I think that's helpful. And we've got clarification on potentially what we could or couldn't-
Right.
-use.
Okay.
Gary?
Well, what I heard was a request for ten thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And if council wants to consider that at a future council meeting, whether it's next Tuesday, the fifth, or whether it's some other time, uh, we would have to probably work up some sort. Typically, the council doesn't, this amounts to, um, supportive of a social program or philanthropy, if you will, uh, all for the right reasons. But it's not been a continuing focus of the city to participate in these sorts of programs. In the past, we've assisted Sojourners with projects, um, not charged, uh, permit fees, those sorts of things. So, this is a little bit unprecedented, uh, to some extent, uh, not dissimilar to the affordable housing, uh, commitment that Walter talked about, that actually we had for about four or five years, six years maybe, finally used it within the last year and a half. So, uh, we'd have to work out with Steve how, uh, the council's commitment, if the council chooses to fund it, um, you know, commitments of how it would be used, those sorts of things. Because you want it to go for a certain reason, and that is to support Sojourners' mission in providing, uh, housing to the homeless. So, that sort of thing. Walter?
Gary, could you or one of your people sit down with Steve and package what he's presenting?
Sure.
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm totally following programs and dates and intent and what the effort is. And a little, a little better picture of what we're asking to help fund.
Okay. Yeah, maybe bring it to council, not the fifth, but the nineteenth.
That'll be fine. We can do that.
Yeah, thank you. Darn federal holidays, Fourth of July. Yes, thank you, Bill.
Okay, we can do that.
Steve, I just, when you came before us a month ago, or six weeks, I, I think I was the one that said, "What are you asking for?" And you said you were just here to inform us. Uh, Catherine has, has pressed you today for, "What are you asking for?" And we get, we've gotten a number, but a little, I think, hesitatingly. Um, I would just suggest that a, a, a straight-out request would be received, be better received. It, it might be at whoever else you're talking to, whether it's county commissioners in different counties, or hospitals, or other social agencies, or whatever. Um, the, it's the ambiguity of it that, that, that doesn't make me want to jump over with Art and ask, "Have we got the money somewhere, Gary, we can give to him?" Um, I, I just, I'm, I need a little better, better, you know, stone to stand on, uh, for it. We, Gary's correct. We're, we're, we're supportive of what you've done. We're supportive of your program. We're, we understand the need. Um, we're not deaf to it. Um, we were able to step up and use some of that low-income housing money six years ago when you had a bathroom blow up on your something. It took one or two places offline, so we were able to, to jump in with that. Um, I think it, a little bit of it is that we're possibly more project-oriented in our thinking than we are in operation funding thinking. So, if you can work with, with Gary and/or whoever he designates to get a pretty solid picture of what we can do to help you, it would help us probably make a decision. Okay?
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so there we go. Work on things until-
We'll bring-
-a couple of council meetings and we'll be back to it.
Do you, you don't need to come back through committee?
No.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a couple back-to-back reports from Kathleen Burns. First is the Art Walk photo and video recap, followed by the Farmers Market, uh, WIC and SNF acronyms.
Could you say, could you say SNF?
There's a whole bunch of letters. WIC and SM, SFMNP. Mysteriously, we'll find out what those stand for in a little bit. Kathleen, you're on.
Okay, thank you. So, um, this is a, a short little film that, um, Zach did for us today. And he was on task on Art Walk night and took quite a bit of filming and photographs. And there was a lot of work put into Art Walk. And so, I just wanted to let, um, Zach be, his talents be shown. So, here we go. So, there you go. It's just a brief little-
There you go, Zach.
So, who attended Art Walk? Yep, good. You made it this year. Good. Okay, so, next up, you switch this out.
Okay, thank you. So, Kathleen, on Art Walk, was it-
Uh-huh.
-a feel for attendance versus previous years?
Was it what?
Your, your feeling about attendance versus previous years, up, down, about the same?
Um, I think-
Both artist-wise and public-wise?
We were down one location. Um, we had seventy-two the previous year. And we had fifteen less artists. Um, I think attendance was up, though. It was spread out longer because we closed, um, Main Street all the way down to A. So, it was a little more spread out. But, um, it was the most people I've ever seen at ten o'clock at night at Friendship Square in all the years I've been doing Art Walk.
Nice.
So, the music that was selected was really good and brought a lot of people.
You realize that success means you probably gonna have to do it again next year.
Yes. But Brandy's not here. And I'd like to give a shout out to, um, she has some staff at One World, um, Aubrey Johnson, that helped with music selection. Also, Lauren McClary with the Pritchard Art Gallery, and Zach Ellis with the Moscow Arts Commission. And that's how we got Igor and the Swamp Donkeys and, um, just all the different bands that performed. Um, and it was, I think Zach that suggested that we have, um, the Border Highlanders march through downtown to start off our Art Walk. And so, it was a lot of fun. Yeah.
And kudos to Zach in the back for putting together the video, too. So, he's very, "Hi, Zach."
Yeah. Gary wanted him to stay to five minutes and he just did forty-three seconds, so, good for him.
Unlike us up here, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, what does WIC and SFMNP stand for?
Lot, lot of acronyms. But, um, I just wanted to point this out. Uh, the state of Idaho does not, um, participate in this program, which is a supplemental nutrition program. And Idaho is one of five states in the United States that does not participate. So, I had a health worker call me from, um, Whitman County and said, "My, um, clients want to attend the Moscow Farmers Market with their support checks. And you should apply to be a registered market." So, I said, "Well, we can't do that because it's the state of Idaho and we don't have that program." And she said, "Well, I really think you could just call Olympia and see if they'll take you as a border market." So, I did. I called, um, Health and Welfare with the state of Washington and went through training program, um, a little over a month ago. And come to find out, we have nine growers and producers that are in our market that are registered with this program, um, already with other markets that they're in. So, they just had it, had to add the Moscow Farmers Market.
As one of their locations?
Yes. So, what this, these stand for is women and infant-
Children.
Children. And then, um, SFMNP is a Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. So, um-
Both are Washington-based?
Yes, for Washington clients because the state of Idaho doesn't recognize this program. But we have so many visitors from Assotin County and Whitman County that it made sense that we apply. And the state came back and said yes. And so, we are the only market outside of the boundary of Washington State to be participating. We are the first market in the state of Idaho to participate with this program.
That's awesome.
So, th- this is kind of, um, a new thing for us. And today, I called, um, a couple of the healthcare agencies to kind of get the numbers of what we were talking about. Um, I was unable to get the numbers of packets that are gonna be distributed in Assotin County. But, uh, Whitman County, there'll be fifty-five packets that will be, um, distributed, and the value is two thousand two hundred. And we've already seen recipients from Whitman County from the senior division at our market.
I'm sorry, and a packet is?
A packet is a series of checks. And, um, it can be up to forty dollars worth of checks per senior to spend.
I want to, I want to clarify something up. There is a WIC program in the state of Idaho.
Yes.
So, I wanted to make sure everybody knows that.
Well, I thought they would.
There is. And there's a SNAP program in the state of Idaho.
Right.
What Kathleen hasn't said is that they just don't participate in this, but the Washington one does. So, I wanted to make it clear that you guys did know there was a WIC office in Moscow here, to the health centers.
Right. And these checks, Bill, are just-
Just wanted to clarify.
That these checks that are an additional checks to the WIC program. And they're put in place to, um, increase fruits and vegetables to, uh, WIC recipients. So, these are additional funds that have been put in place by the US government for, um, farmers to sell more fruits and vegetables directly to the consumer.
So, not to go too far into the vegetables, but the, the checks are intended for either grocery stores or farmers' markets to buy vegetables? Is that?
The standard WIC checks that are issued are for, um, groceries, for, um-
Okay.
-retail storefronts, as Bill points out. These are a second series of checks that,
Available only in, in our area from Washington for a farmer's market?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, um, because we are bordering county to Whitman and Assotin, and they both recognize these programs, they accepted our market. And the fact that we have nine farmers and producers in our market that are already in this program. And the other fact they looked at is we had fourteen thousand dollars worth of SNAP go through the Moscow Farmers Market last year alone, made us a viable market for this program. So, um, the-
Excuse me, the-
Go ahead.
-majority of the vendors listed in your, of your nine vendors, no, that's not true. A lot of those are Washington farms.
Mm-hmm. There are several vendors-
Or any of them Idaho, or can Idaho farms get in on this?
Yes. So, we have, we have, um, growers in our market that are still applying. And they have until July nineteenth to put in their paperwork with the state of Washington. We have one vendor right here, River City Farm, which is Lewiston, Idaho. Amachi Farm is in Colton. Um, Tonamakers, everybody knows Tonamakers, that's Royal City. Wilson Banner Ranch is one of our oldest vendors.
Assotin?
Mm-hmm. Pomeroy. Mm-hmm. So, we will have more growers. It's just a matter of application.
It will expand from nine?
Yes. And nine is quite a bit. So, um, I think that's why we were looked at by the state of Washington. So, here's a typo here. In, under Assotin, I apologize, there's not one thousand two hundred and fifty packets. There's a hundred and twenty-five packets. And then in Whitman County alone, there's a hundred and eighty packets that will be going out. And the value for these packets, um, in Assotin, the value is two thousand four hundred, and Whitman County, thirty-six hundred. So, we have the potential to grow more revenue for our farmers from this program.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Really good. You're awfully good at keeping your eyes open on these things. And I'm glad you're enlisting people to apply and get involved. So, kudos all around.
Thank you. So, you'll see these signs. Um, I just ordered twenty more signs from the state of Washington. Um, they're a heavy plastic sign. And you'll see them on the booths of the vendors that are in the program. And then we'll create a map at the city tent for the customers. So, we can put the, um, the sign in the vendor booth area so they'll know where to access the vendors. And these checks will go out July sixth.
And all of this-
So, we're getting ready. And these checks will go out July 6th, so we're getting ready.
Are the recipients of the packets told that we're in their accepted list of places to spend them?
So, the healthcare workers are now pushing the Moscow Farmer's Market. Yep.
Need two restrooms downtown.
You're going to have to jump the other side of Third Street, so, yeah. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything? If there are none, entertain me with motion, please.
Let's go home.
I second.
There you go. We're done. Thank you.